Okay, good morning, everybody. Thanks for joining us today. We are here for item number one, which is a action item for the Board of Supervisors today. The appointment for State Senate, Senator Legislative District Number Two. I'm going to call Roll.
Good morning. Thank you. We have Supervisor Sellers online. Supervisor Sellers.
Here.
Supervisor Gates. Supervisor Galvin online.
Here.
Supervisor Gallardo.
Here.
And Chairman Hickman.
Here. And Jack and Tom, we can hear you clearly. So thanks for joining us today for this item. So I'll just read it off pursuant to ARS number four, one, two, zero, two. Receive the names of the three qualified electors as candidates to fill the vacancy for the Legislative District Two State Senators seat as submitted by the Legislative District Two Precinct Committee men. And appoint one of the candidates from the list to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of State Senator Steve Kaiser of and of which we thank him for his service. The three candidates' names submitted by the district are Shawna Bullock. Shawna Bullock, I'm sorry, Josh Barnett and Paul Carver. So with that, I have been asked to put this on the agenda because I believe someone has a motion, looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, for calling this special meeting today. I want to thank all my colleagues for coming in here as we begin to deal with another hundred and ten degree plus day of heat here in, in July. This is a very important process, very important responsibility that we have here at the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors. And I definitely want to begin by, and I do have a motion, but if, if I could just make a few remarks before the motion.
Please.
First of all, I would join you, Mr. Chair, in thanking Steve Kaiser for his service to LD Two. Appreciate the seriousness with which Senator Kaiser addressed some of the most vexing problems we have in Maricopa County right now, particularly as it relates to affordable housing. So, so really grateful for the work that he did. And I think all of us on this board understand, certainly understand Senator Kaiser's decision that, that it's in his best interest and the interests of his family to move on from public service. And I think that's a sad statement on what, what people in elected office are having to deal with right now. But I, I certainly respect his decision and support his decision. There are a lot of people who are involved in the process when we appoint a new member to the legislature. And I want to thank everyone who was involved in this. Under Arizona law, the precinct committee members are involved and they select three people who are sent up to the Board of Supervisors and we have to pick one of those three. And I've been a precinct committee man since the nineteen nineties. I feel very strongly in the importance of having strong political parties. But frankly, right now, our legislative districts are dysfunctional in the Republican Party. And right now, I, I wish that, that this process didn't play out the way that it does right now because of the dysfunction that's going on. They're not representative of, in my opinion, the broad breadth of the Republican Party. But this is, this is the situation that we're in right now because here at Maricopa County, we always follow the law. And so the law requires that we pick one of these, one of these three folks. Now, I asked for these three people to sit down with me for an interview and they did, and I thank them for that. And I thought we had three really good interviews. I asked them a lot of tough questions and they were candid. And I'm grateful for that. In particular, I asked them, probably no surprise to folks, I asked them some questions about elections. And all three of them agreed with me that it's time to move on, not only from the 2020 election, but also the 2022 election. So I thank them, all three of them, for saying that to me. And I also appreciate that all three of them believe that the only way that we get good reforms moving forward in elections is by working with experts like the elections experts that we have here in Maricopa County. So I appreciated that all three of them said that to me as well. But having gone through the process, talked to all three of them, I believe that there's only a one candidate who is ready to go down to the, to the legislature, hit the ground running at this point, and that's Shawna Bullock. And so that's why I do plan to put her name forward at this time. In particular, I feel that Shawna is still, like I am, in, on balance, a small government conservative. We, we don't agree on everything, but I believe she still has that perspective, which I think is a perspective that we need down at the Arizona Legislature right now in that Republican caucus. Particularly, she has a small government mindset when it comes to the question of whether Maricopa County should be split up. So I definitely appreciate her view on that. And I also appreciate her commitment that she will work with Maricopa County and in particular, Maricopa County elections as we move forward into, again, an extremely important election coming forward in 2024. And finally, I appreciated her desire to keep government out of business. That's something I believe in. I think my colleagues on the board here, not to speak for them, I think they have that perspective as well. And I, I think that will be good down at the state legislature. So to sum up, I think that she has the, the best qualities of the three to go down and represent LD Two in the Arizona Senate. So with that, Mr. Chair, I move that we select Shawna Bullock as the Senator from LD Two.
Great. Well, thank you Supervisor Gates. And as you called me and wanted this on the agenda, you did say that you felt you had a solid second for what you had in mind. So I, I will now look for a second.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, Supervisor Galvin, please.
I enthusiastically second Supervisor Gates's motion, and I'd also like to make a comment on the appointment when you deem proper.
Okay, let's, let's go, go ahead and, go ahead and make your comment as we're forming up for a vote. Let's, let, go ahead and make your remarks if you would like.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, thank you so much. And first of all, to my colleague Supervisor Gates, thank you so much for your due diligence and taking this very important decision in the responsible way as you always do. And just like you, I want to thank Senator Kaiser for his work and what he has done and the impact that he has made on the state of Arizona. I also want to thank the three nominees. Obviously, all of us know in public service that this is not an easy gig. So anyone who raises their hand and is willing to serve, I think, should be commended. For me, this choice is not about voting against anyone, even not even voting for the lesser three evils. I, I am voting for Shawna Bullock. I have known Shawna Bullock for quite a long time. We are personal friends before either of us even ran for office. And I know about her character and about her love for Arizona. But I'm also very impressed by her career after she became an elected official. Supervisor Gates noted she is a small government conservative, just like I am. And during her tenure as a state representative, I believe she honorably represented her constituents. She was a natural problem solver. She worked one-on-one with her constituents on consumer protection, education, criminal justice reform, all issues that I think that we feel are important as well. And I have seen her breadth and expertise in a wide variety of policy areas. And I know she's been a dedicated and successful public service, in my opinion, because she understands that elected officials must be responsive to constituents while adhering to the rule of law. And I saw firsthand her tenacity in the state houses. I personally worked with her on some issues. And I saw her force the state agency to meet with all stakeholders to get it built through the House. And Shawna has devoted most of her adult life to the school choice movement and other issues that I care deeply about, empowering families to find the best education for their kids. And I do believe this is a crucial time for the state senate, for the legislature, for our state. And I want to thank the PCs for giving us these three names. But I enthusiastically and happily will vote for Shawna Bullock today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Tom. I appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Supervisor Gallardo.
Thank you. Just a real quick comment. I wanted to also thank Senator Kaiser for, for his work there at the legislature. I know how, how tough the job is. It, it is probably one of the most important jobs when it comes to elected officials is the state legislature. It really is. They're dealing with a number of various issues and you have so many different personalities. And then you bring in all the, the partisan garbage and, and it makes it very tough to really do the, the state's business. But Senator Kaiser was one of those gentlemen, and I don't know him well, I, I'll be frank. But just from watching from afar and his work, the interim committee on housing. This seemed to be a senator that really went down there to do good for the state of Arizona. Really wanted to focus on something that he was passionate about, and that was housing. And he put on this interim committee, he had stakeholders, he had members from both parties, and they worked all summer. And they came up with a proposal. And, and they introduced it in a, with a, there in the legislature as a bill. And then the partisan ugliness, all the political stuff starts to happen. And all the great work he had, he has done, all those months leading up to trying to really address one of the key issues right now in the valley, and that is affordable housing. You know, it wasn't until I got here to the Board of Supervisors that I figured out housing is the number one issue facing Maricopa County and the citizens. It was the number one issue prior to COVID. And now COVID has just made it even more difficult and then just the economy and, and all the different little ladders that lead to the increase of, of having more affordable housing. So he was really trying to address it. And unfortunately, he had a tough time. And I don't want to put words in his mouth, but I would imagine he probably walked around or walked out with a very bad taste in his mouth. He had worked so hard and I give him kudos for what he has done. Yeah, it may not have been a perfect bill, but this is how we really get substantive changes here in the state of Arizona. And he kind of went in that direction and unfortunately, it was just, just a huge pushback on what he was attempting to do. So kudos to him. I also thank him for his service there in the legislature. I know it's not an easy task to take on. And then when you're dealing with an issue like housing and you have so many different elements involved in it, it makes it tough. So kudos to the Senator, thank him for his service. Going right back to a, a comment that Supervisor Gates brought up, and that is the legislative process. I think this is one area that really needs to be fixed. I mean, you look at, don't get me wrong, I believe in public input. I believe public should be engaged in this. But there has to be a better way of selecting legislative appointments or vacancies. I, I think it's one of the most important tasks we do as supervisors from, you know, from the tax rate to the budget, key issues. And then right there underneath it to me is this legislative appointments, the justice of the peace appointment, constable's appointment. These are very important positions, but there has to be a better process set out than fourteen twelve oh two. Again, I support the legislature or the, the public input. But what you end up getting, in my opinion, is three candidates. And we saw it time and time again, three candidates that you stop and kind of scratch your head. Do they truly reflect the values of that legislative district? Do they reflect the values of the state of Arizona? And, and it is, the system right now is so set up with the precinct committee man. And I'm one, and I don't vote for precinct committee. I don't think that is a role that the Board of Supervisors should be involved in. But the way the process is set up right now, it just makes it more difficult. The statute does state that we must, we've had this discussion, we must select from the three. And, and do I think Ms. Bullock, Shawna Bullock is the top candidate to fill that position? No. Do I think that there's other qualified conservative Republicans in this legislative district to best represent not only the district, the state? Yes, but unfortunately, the system that is set up right now really leaves out many qualified candidates because of the way it's set up. So I, I'll go along with the, with Supervisor Gates's recommendation. I know he put a lot of work. I know this is tough. These are tough issues. But I just, again, the process that is laid out currently in statute on how to fill legislative vacancies is broken. It needs to be fixed. You are not truly getting the best qualified candidate in legislative district two. We saw it even in some of my legislative districts. I feel that if we open up the process to allow the public to have input in terms of selecting maybe a citizens panel. But if, if we keep it the same way we have currently right now under fourteen twelve oh two, I think we are going to continue to have candidates, in my opinion, that are not the best qualified. I believe out of the three, Ms. Bullock is probably the best choice out of the three. I don't know them all. I know them personally by, mostly just by name. But she, Mr. Gates is right. She has been down there. She knows the lay of the land. She can hit the ground running. I'm probably not going to agree with her politics, and that's fine. It's, it's the way, it's the way governing is done. But nonetheless, I do think she's probably is the best fit right now to step in and, and continue the work that is needed to be done in the state of Arizona and understand the process.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. Thank you, Steve. So before I call a vote, I think I've had three colleagues that wanted to weigh in before the vote. I'll look to my vice chairman, Jack Sellers. Jack, before I call for a vote, would you like to make, would you like to make any remarks?
The, the only thing I'll mention, Mr. Chairman, is that of the three people that were appointed or selected by the precinct committee man, Shawna Bullock was the only one that reached out to me to ensure that I understood what, how, what she represents and what her priorities are. And I appreciated that.
Thank you, Jack. So bef, before I take the vote, then I'd like to maybe say a couple of words about the, about the process. First of all, as I've said, I don't know how, I'm, I'm losing track of how many appointments we've made in just, in just this year alone. But specifically, just in my, in my time being here on this board and making appointments, there's been quite a lot, just even in my own district. And I will tell, over these last two picks, I, I've had the ability to sit down and look face to face to both our speaker, House Speaker Ben Toma, and to Senate President Warren Peterson, and said, this process needs to be looked at. I don't know, this is, this is ripe for an area where it seems like Maricopa County sometimes does battle with the, both the senate and the house just by picking their membership. And we don't need that. We don't, we don't need that as a board, especially during this time of our lives. We don't need that. And I will reflect back on five years ago at a pick where I, I said, I, I'm awfully afraid with this procedure and the way it happens. We're, someday, we are going to pick an ax murderer. We are going to put an ax murderer in your house because we don't know these people. We don't have a chance to vet them out properly. When we did, when we have been vetting them out properly, we get smashed for it that we're taking too long. The county attorney's office, as well as our own human resources department, does the best they can to look, to look at these people because some of these names you might have heard because they've been in the legislature. And other names, we're hearing for the first time also when we see them and we are supposed to make a selection. So the process needs to cha, the process needs to change. We are, we are getting the selection made for us. If that's what's going to occur, then someone else can make that selection. I do not need to be involved in that and put my name and my position on somebody I don't even know. The last time, the pick before, we were, we were said awfully negative things out of one house of the government that did not understand because I had already had a talk with the other house of the government, saying this is going to take a little bit of time in order to do things right and do things prudently as the county does and stay within the law. We need to take a good, hard look at people for you. And we heard negativity from the other branch. Now it's this branch of government's time to wait and listen and try, let us make the most solid pick we can for their house of government. So some things do need to change, and I, I've called attention to that again, to Senate President Peterson. So hopefully we'll see, because this is statutory. This is by statute. This is the, the House and the Senate make law, signed by the governor, and we act on it. Before I call for the vote, and I will tell you, also Vice Chairman Sellers, thanks for saying how you're framing what your thoughts are. Shawna Bullock was the only one that reached out to me also. She reached out to me and said, I would like to come and see you. I'd like to come and, and tell you about my vision. And I, and I said, great, because I have some thoughts myself. And we talked for two hours. She was one willing to do that. The pick was delayed up until this point because our human resources department and our county attorney's office in the vetting of candidates did find some things in the vetting of candidates, did find some things in the background of somebody. And it, it needed to warrant further discussion and further deliberation if that was a legitimate pick sent by the PCs. So here we are. And so thank you for Shawna Bullock for reaching out to the board members and feeling she needed to have a little bit of FaceTime, and this is important. Last thing I'm going to say is, these picks are important. This is the legislature, and it's important to the county and countywide officials. I would like to point out, Sessor Eddie Cook is here today to watch this, to watch this pick. And so I appreciate your service also, Eddie, for what you do for the county, and you understand the importance. So thank you for being here. Okay. So we have a motion in a second in favor of Ms. Shawna Bullock for the Senate vacancy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing done, motion carries. Congratulations, Ms. Bullock. And again, thank you for the other appointees for participating in the process. And again, thanks a lot to the human resources department and the county attorney's office for helping us vet these candidates. With that, we are adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.